I'll go ahead and call the June 11th Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Chair Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Yana Semenova, Sam Skoll.
Here.
Ron Heberlein, Matt Constantine.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any other matter concerned, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record, or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Seeing there's no audience members, I'm going to skip the part about podiums and coming up and talking. And I don't see anyone in the room. Can I ask if there's anyone online?
I currently have no attendees online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then moving on to consideration of the minutes. The May, sorry, the May 14th minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. The minutes are approved as distributed. Okay, and now we're cruising along to the public hearing. So I'll go ahead and call to order the public hearing regarding Resolution Number LP, sorry, 25-0002 for the Climate Friendly and Equitable Community Parking Project at 6:02 PM. Have all commissioners familiarized themselves with the application?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll call the city staff to present the staff report, including staff proposed recommendations, along with applicable review and approval criteria. Will city staff please present their report and recommendation?
Certainly, I'd be pleased to do that. I'm Daniel Polly. I'm the city's planning manager. With me is Brian Davis, who has been a great help to this project in navigating all things parking and state regulations. Exciting stuff. So we're here for a public hearing for LP 25-0002, which is a series of development code amendments related to complying with the state's CEFAC or Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Parking Rules. So the criteria applicable to that proposal can be found in Attachment 2 to the staff report, which has been entered into the record, is available at the side of the room, and otherwise made available to the public as required. So briefly, let's go through the background for the record. So the primary driver of the project, including these proposed code amendments, is the state's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CEFAC program, which started March 10th, 2022, when then-Governor Kate Brown issued an executive order directing state agencies to reduce climate pollution. And while, while the CEFAC program is much broader than parking, this is the part that we've done, and this is the part we're focused on here tonight. So with that in mind, really what we're trying to do here is comply with the state rules, but at the same time, look for opportunities to better encourage quality and functional development with park, when, as parking is developed in Wilsonville. So what, why these rules, really, as, as stated by the state, the purpose is to remove or substantially reform minimum parking requirements throughout the state. And that's really based on findings that minimum requirements, as are pretty common and have been pretty common in municipal zoning codes, lead to inefficient land use, less walkability, and more pollution from driving. So as we've talked through during our work sessions, there's two compliance phases. Parking A, which is already in effect and has been superseding, superseding city's code for some time, and Parking B, which must be complied with by the end of this month. So Parking A is really limit minimum parking requirements for certain uses, particularly certain residential uses. But in the Wilsonville context, probably more importantly, there is part of that is what we call the Transit Proximity Rule, which removes parking minimums for most of the city due to proximity to frequent transit, which is, which is defined as within half a mile of the most frequent bus routes, which include Smart Route 4 and 2X, and within three quarters of a mile of a transit rail station. So with that, all, the only really areas of the city that aren't impacted by this rule are Charbonneau, about the western two-thirds of Vilbois, and a portion of the northwest industrial area. Parking A also included some specific requirements to be electric vehicle-ready to facilitate the electrification of the, of the transportation. So as we've shown a number of times, here is just a map, which says a lot. And this really, while it affect is related to Parking A, also has a big impact on the choices that are being pursued for Parking B that we'll talk about in a minute. But again, emphasizing that the majority of the city is already exempt from parking minimums under these Parking A rules. So moving on to Parking B. So first of all, in terms of Parking A, essentially what these proposed code amendments do is take those state rules that have been superseding local code and making local code align. So really, most of this project's been focused on what we call Parking B, which has two components. First of all, choosing one of three options to further reform parking minimums. And then also having, for that parking that is built, having some design standard reform. So those parking minimums give three options, which we've talked about quite a bit. And after careful consideration by the Planning Commission and, and City Council, as well as public input, Option 1, which removes parking minimums in those few areas that still have parking minimums with the Transit Proximity Rule, and making it consistent across the city. And really, based on findings that the cost and added complexity of implementing either Option 2 or Option 3 didn't really have the benefit for the cost, because it impacts such few areas that either are likely to, in terms of industrial, likely to already provide ample parking or residential areas that are likely to develop or redevelop in the foreseeable future. So with that in mind, the proposed development code standards really expand that no parking minimums throughout the city under Option 1. So let's shift to that other part, is the parking lot design standard changes. To understand this, we, what's proposed, we first want to kind of do a baseline of what are the standards and what kind of standards we're talking about. These are things like screening, the amount of landscaping within a parking area, which includes a ratio of, of a tree per so many parking spaces, the onsite pedestrian path requirements, which are also in another part of the code, but there's some additional requirements here, as well as design of drive aisles. What's important to note here is for most parking areas, unless they're quite large, currently, the city has one set of design standards. And then for, if there's 200 or more spaces, then another set of design standards. So a big change under the CEFAC rules, as it, as it applies to design standards, is that there's a lower threshold for some of the enhanced design requirements. So going to about 40 spaces, down to 40 spacers, rather than the current code, which says 200. So with that in mind, you really end up with three tiers of, of of parking area size in terms of what standards apply. So with that in mind, for any space, for any parking areas that are 40 spaces or less, our current standards will continue to meet the CEFAC requirements, as well as those more rigorous standards we have in place for, for more than 200 spaces, also meet the CEFAC standard. So it comes down to that 40 to 200 spaces. That's where we need to adjust our standards to meet the CEFAC rules. So just to orient you to what size of parking area we're talking about. 40 spaces is about essentially this first bay out here in front of City Hall is shown in this image. And then 200 spaces is essentially the parking area by Goodwill, kind of north of Safeway. That whole parking area is about 200 spaces. So one component that is also part of this is is, is also allowing developers to install solar panels in lieu of some of the required tree plantings. So for 40 or more spaces, you need to have 40% parking lot tree canopy. While less than 40, you're looking at 30%. So essentially, what the solar panel program does, in lieu of 25% of the required parking lot trees or 10% total of, of tree canopy, you can install solar panels. It doesn't have to be in the parking area. It could be on the roof or elsewhere on the site. But that is, in the rules and through prior discussions with the Planning Commission, really have, have similar climate impacts and made sense to add that flexibility that's allowed in the rules. So with that, really, the recommendation is for less than 40, again, you have your existing general design standards. For 40 to 200, you have those general design standards plus those CEFAC-required enhanced tree solar standards. And then for the 200-plus spaces, you have the existing design standards that are already enhanced, plus the optional solar standards. So then what have we done since the last PC work session, based on your comments? There was one requirement that said for that, for that, those upper two tiers, so 40 to 200 and 200-plus, that 25% of trees need to be in the interior of the parking lot. It was pointed out that is that really doable, particularly for those smaller ones? And we found that actually, that is a carryover from our existing code. That's not required by rules. So we adjusted that to just apply to the 200-plus, consistent with the current code, and allow that additional flexibility for that 400 to 200 tier. The other one, in response to a specific comment, in referencing eternal, internal walkways required by that 200-plus tier, changed from front entrance to main entrance, recognizing that something like Old Town Square, the front entrance may be on the sidewalk, where really you're looking, facing a street, where the main entrance is really what you're looking at, access from the parking lot. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Also allow Mr. Davis to add any commentary he'd like. But overall, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution, recommending the City Council adopt these development code amendments. Thank you. Brian, anything to add?
I don't think so. I'm here for your questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Awesome. Okay, so does the Planning Commission have any questions at this time? There will be additional opportunity to ask questions following public testimony. Okay, seeing none. So the next portion of the public hearing will be provide an opportunity for the Planning Commission to your testimony from audience members. And I will have to read all of this, even though there's no audience members in the building.
I, I think if you, if we get a clue, if anybody has planned to testify or is on Zoom.
No attendees on Zoom.
I think you're probably fine.
Okay, so seeing that there's no one in the audience to testify, and we've just confirmed that no one is online, and I just want to confirm too, that there was no email testimony either?
Double check.
I just double-checked the planning email, and there is none.
Okay. Given that, I'm going to keep us moving forward. Skipping a couple pages here, so give me a second. Okay, so wow, there's a lot here about testimony, so I'm just reading through. Okay, so I believe this is where we start now. What if any discussion, does any commissioner wish to have to help ensure they have gathered all the information they need to make a decision? This is different than the discussion we will have to deliberate once a motion is made. Discussion at this point should focus on understanding the facts presented and clarifying particular points, rather than expressing conclusions, which we'll do in a few minutes. No questions? We have talked about this quite a bit, so that's a good sign, I guess. Hearing no further discussion. I'm prepared to close the hearing. Once the hearing is closed, there cannot be any other discussion, comment, or question pertaining to the material matters of the case file, except among commissioners. However, the commission may ask staff-specific clarifying procedural questions. Please confirm there is no additional discussion needed at this point, and no further questions. Okay, so seeing none. This is a little redundant. Sorry, folks. Thanks for hanging in there. Okay, so I declare this public hearing closed at 6:17 PM. With the public hearing closed, it's time for Planning Commission to entertain a motion to deliberate and make a decision on the resolution before us. Do I have a commissioner who wishes to make a motion? And if there's any amendment, please include that in the motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number LP 25-0002 as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the Planning Commission approve the Resolution Number LP 25-0002. Any discussion? Well, I'll just say thank you for helping us navigate what seemed a little complex at first to understand, but I really appreciate the effort to just align with other city practices and kind of just navigate state requirements. So I appreciate the time, and Brian, thanks for joining us each time to, to help with the conversation.
Thanks. Planning commissions are great.
Great. Okay.
I'll just, I'll just add that thank you for patience with us, because I think we ran you around the base of the tree many times. And just because we were trying to understand the intent behind it. So appreciate your patience, and yeah, great job.
Commissioner Skoll, do you have anything?
I'll second or third that too. I appreciate you walking us through it and have a whole new appreciation for parking spaces these days. So it's quite complex, and so every time I pull into a parking space, it's like, but thank you. Good job.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. I'll call, call the question all in favor. Say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, hearing none. So the motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you. That's, on to the next thing. So now on our agenda, we have an, uh, and I think it's a, it says informational item. So yeah, annual housing report. I'll go ahead and hand it over to the team to give presentation.
Chair Hendricks and commissioners, I'll take just a minute as Sarah's getting set up here. I just wanted to briefly introduce this topic, because it is, we've hit kind of a milestone with it, with the annual housing report. Back in 2014, we adopted a residential land study, which is essentially the same thing we just adopted as a city or in the process of adopting with the Housing Needs Capacity Analysis and Housing Production Strategy. So the last version of that we did was in 2014, 10 years ago. And there were a number of recommendations from that. One included doing the town center plan, another was Frog Pond East and South and the urban reserve. And part of that was for the city to start tracking housing permit data, housing activity, understanding production and entitlement, so development approvals in the city, to better understand our growth in comparison to a lot of the regional assumptions for our growth, because we had consistently been outpass, outpacing regional assumptions for our growth. And so we wanted to have an opportunity to track that and understand it in terms of how it related to types of housing, the mix of housing, and the land need for that housing. So are we developing efficiently? That has now grown into, every year, there's questions, right? There's questions about, well, what's happening with affordability? What's happening with this other type of housing product that we weren't tracking before? And so it's evolved, and it's been really exciting to watch this turn from a PDF that I created in WordPerfect, or not WordPerfect, the publisher, to now being a very dynamic, online ARC GIS and story map-based report. And so that, all, all of that is because of my team. So just want to give a shout out to Assistant Planner Sarah Pearlman and her excellent job in producing this year's annual housing report. And so there's going to be a lot of data in here now that we get to look at for five years, 10 years, and be able to see trends over time that we have been tracking. And so just kind of an exciting, important milestone, especially now as the rest of the state is going to be catching up to us, because they're going to have to be tracking their production much more closely. It feels good to have something that's kind of under our belt. We know how to do, and we can continue to do it. So with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Pearlman to take it away.
Thank you so much, and good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Pearlman, Assistant Planner. I have the honor tonight to present you with the 2024 Housing Report. And as Miranda mentioned, this is especially exciting, because it marks the 10th year that the city's been putting this report together. So we explored the standard data this year with options to dig into data from the past decade, and we'll also touch on a couple new topics at kind of a high level. So to start off, giving a short overview of activity in the past year. 58 homes were permitted for construction with certificates of occupancy. The Development Review Board approved 121 apartments with the Voila development and two subdivisions in Frog Pond West, 117-lot subdivision with an anticipated 34 units, including middle housing, and then 128-lot subdivision with an anticipated 52 units. Population grew by 0.8% based on revised estimates from the Portland State University Population Research Center. The number of housing units grew by 0.5%. And we'll circle back on the revised population estimates piece a little later. We really dug into population data this year. So the kind of theme of this year's report is the ways that the city is setting the stage for housing development. The city's in between production cycles, but there are exciting housing projects in progress, and groundwork is being laid to make more housing production possible. So we started off by highlighting Voila, which is currently under construction as an incredible opportunity for transit-connected, affordable housing and community amenities. The Development Review Board approved the Voila development in 2024, and construction is expected to complete in 2026. Units will be affordable to households making between 30 and 80% of the area median income. It's also an exciting chance to highlight in this report some of the benefits of transit-oriented developments, including not only increased transit access for residents of the development, but also reductions in traffic, traffic-related injuries, and pollution associated with cars. The report also explores some of the big steps the city has taken and is taking to enable development in Frog Pond East and South and throughout the city. I know that the Planning Commission is very familiar with the development code updates, which not only implement the Frog Pond East and South master plan, but also streamline and clarify the process for housing development throughout the city. The adoption of the Infrastructure Funding Plan is another big milestone highlighted in the report. And that's paired with looking at some major infrastructure projects, like the Beckman Trail and Interceptor Project, the Beckman Road Improvements, and the upcoming Stafford Road Improvement Projects. So while a downturn in production activity due to market fluctuations and uncertainties has definitely been clear, the groundwork currently being laid for development is all the more important to ensure that the housing that will be built in the near future meets the variety of needs and desires of all Wilsonville residents. So we're going to take, ooh, I don't know why it decided just to skip some of my maps, I guess. There we go. So taking a look at a few maps we put together, you can see the locations and numbers of permitted homes, along with some high-level statistics. We do a similar map for permitting activity over the past 10 years, since 2014. And then the heat map is always a fun way to look at where development has been centered, so you can really see a major part of development in Vilbois since 2014, as well as a concentration of development in Frog Pond. The last map shows development approvals. So the blue icons represent plans from 2014 to 2023, the orange are from 2024. And then all the maps are interactive, so you can zoom in, zoom out, click on each of these individual icons, and it'll tell you information about the development approvals. So this one is Voila. Digging in to some trends, housing prices have continued to rise, although the rate of growth has leveled from the spike in 2021 that you can see on this chart. The median sales price of a home in 2024 was just over $643,000. This was a 3% increase from the 2023 price. In this chart, you can also see the estimated affordable home price. It's defined as the price a household making the median income can afford if they're paying no more than 30% of their income to their mortgage. The estimated monthly mortgage payment is based on assumptions of a 20% down payment and a 30-year term, factoring in expected property taxes and the interest rate of that year. The median home costs 74% more than what a household making the median income could reasonably afford. And that gap between an affordable price and the actual price has remained notably wide since 2020. This may be due in part to interest rates that have remained relatively high compared to the rates earlier in the past 10 years. But turning to income, the increase in annual income has been fairly consistent year-to-year, especially since 2022, despite notable fluctuations in median sales price changes relative to the stable, or relatively stable increase in income. The median sales prices started to adjust more consistently in the past couple of years. It is important to note that this chart does not show the impact of interest rates on the actual costs, and just really looks at kind of the sticker price, so to speak. As I mentioned up top, and as Miranda mentioned, because this is the 10th year, we have kind of these callouts where we had data, and it made sense to include them, where you can click and see the charts in kind of a 10-year view, so you can really see those more recent major fluctuations in median sales price rate of change. And then moving into rent, we do a similar kind of analysis. Let's see, the median rent increased by 2.9% from the prior year to $1,784 per month in 2024. The median rent continued to exceed what a household making the median income and paying 30% of their income to rent could afford. Looking at the costs over the past decade, this table shows that the actual and estimated affordable, or yeah, affordable rent prices prior to 2021 were more closely aligned than the relationship between actual and affordable rent in 2021 and forward, although it does seem to be closing in together a little bit. This indicates that the median Wilsonville renter continues to be rent-burdened in 2024. So while income for renters rose in 2024, and you can see quite a notable increase, the gap between what rent costs and what is affordable gap between what rent costs and what is affordable remains fairly wide and this is just sort of another view of that table that you saw earlier. So we break down the cost and rent burden question a bit further using data from the American Community Survey. This first chart looks at both renting and owning households and we can see that nearly all households earning less than $20,000 per year were cost burdened, so spending more than 30% of their income on housing, while a majority share of households, both owning and renting, earning less than $75,000 per year were also cost burdened. The trend is more pronounced if we turn to just renting households almost across the And turning to kind of severe rent burden, approximately 27.2% of Wilsonville renters experienced severe rent burden in 2024. This means that they paid more than 50% of their income to rent. The report also includes an overview of what we heard from attendees of the annual community conversation on housing cost burden that was held in December of 2024. This was the second of these community conversations that the city has held. This year's housing report also touches on houselessness and transitory housing, building upon observations noted in last year's report. As you may recall, relatively recent state laws required cities to establish compassionate protections for people experiencing houselessness. In response, the city designated a portion of the City Hall parking lot for vehicle camping and the city-owned parcel just north of City Hall for tent camping. Over the past year, the city has observed about 10 vehicles and one to two tent campers using these spaces and these are really just like rough observations of the use of those spaces. Then, in addition, approximately 106 people either stay long-term or regularly stay in local hotels and motels as finances allow or as needed. This data includes, but it's not exclusive to those experiencing houselessness, so it likely also accounts for contractors in town for work for longer periods of time or those in need of temporary shelter due to other circumstances like work on their homes or family needs. So it really just gives a bit of a high-level glimpse. Turning to housing mix, approximately 66% of Wilsonville's households consisted of one to two people in 2024. This exceeds the share of studio and one-bedroom units, which are approximately 18% of the housing stock. It's just something to note as it may indicate the need for housing units with fewer bedrooms or smaller sizes. And then in terms of overall housing mix, in 2024, about 44.7% of housing was apartments and about 44.5% was detached single-family homes. Townhouses make up the next largest portion, shown in kind of that pinkish-red. But more cluster housing duplexes and ADUs are anticipated. And then the report examined similar communities at a high level, so I'll just briefly go over that data. Wilsonville generally remained consistent with cohort cities in terms of median home sales price. It was pretty consistent with cohort cities in terms of the percent of the population experiencing rent burden and was also relatively comparable to similar cities in terms of the percent of the population experiencing severe rent burden. And then before we dig too far into the population, as I mentioned up top, the city uses population estimates from the Portland State University Population Research Center. The Population Research Center is Oregon's dedicated agency and has been delegated by state law to prepare population estimates. For all cities and counties in the state, it provides like a uniform statewide data set. They use a variety of sources to establish their estimates each year and for their 2024 estimates, the Population Research Center released revisions going back to 2020 to increase accuracy and they're really using the 2020 Decennial Census as a benchmark. So the report throughout includes population figures using both a comparison to the estimates published in past reports, just sort of for consistency and to understand the methodology and how it's sort of changed over time, as well as the revised estimates for a more accurate view of how the population has changed over the past couple of years. Based on the revised estimates, which are shown on this chart, Wilsonville also remained consistent with population growth. We did look into vacancy rates and have not seen an increase in vacancy rates for Wilsonville or the cohort cities that are looked at in this report. So in the event of slower population growth or even a decline in growth, the need for housing persists, the number of households itself isn't slowing or lowering. In terms of housing, housing growth has also been fairly steady in Wilsonville over the past few years compared to cohort cities. And then looking forward, since Metro's housing growth forecast in 2014, about 57% of the projected growth in housing units has been constructed. And 71% of residential land inventoried in 2014 has been dedicated to approved plans. When we add in the 2018 urban growth boundary expansion, which was about an additional 275 acres, 45% of the available residential land in the city has been dedicated to approved development plans. And just to finish out, housing affordability and availability continue to be major issues facing many communities across the Portland metro region and the nation. Interest rates remained relatively high in 2024, likely a factor in the rising costs and cost burden related to housing. This year's report focuses on the groundwork being laid to unlock more housing in the coming years and highlights Voila as a fantastic reminder that housing is about more than just a roof over one's head and a place to sleep at night. It's about community and livability for both the residents of a development and for the broader community. And with that, thank you so much for your time and attention. I really look forward to your thoughts and questions.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it. I'll go ahead and turn it over to anyone to share any questions they might have for the team or thought, reactions to. Commissioner Carr?
What happened in 2021? I mean, I was alive, but I don't remember. The population went way up in 2020 and then cost of housing and cost of rent went spiked in 2021. It has to be COVID, right? It's gotta be related.
I don't think so.
Oh, and then I just wanted to say, for context, I went to try to find this type of report on West Lynn. Yeah. So we're, this report is considerably way beyond anything that I could find on any other city in the local area, so nice job.
And it's so much better than the report that was done 10 years ago, too, right?
Oh. Do you have other questions or thoughts? All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Willard?
Thank you for the report and it feels very familiar because we've seen it a couple of years and I like that, it just, it's something that is very easily consumed for us and it's very consistent with the housing needs analysis and so thanks for all the work on that. And a thought that I had just now that I wonder if it would be interesting, maybe it wouldn't be interesting to add it to this report, but add it to one of these compatible reports is the duration it takes to get from urban growth boundary to approval to permitting and just kind of track that data over time to see what is our duration that it takes to actually get production, housing produced, rather.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Great job, Sarah.
Thank you all.
Yeah, Commissioner Skol?
I just have a real quick question regarding rents. What's the pressure on rents to, you know, that's going on that we see such an increase, a high increase? A lot of the rentals here in town are over-established rentals and everything, but it seems like those rents are pushing, you know, as high as they can. What's, do you know, have any idea what's driving that?
Yeah, thank you for that great question. We don't necessarily look into the root causes, but I know that the trend really started in sort of 2021 around COVID and so there may be some relationship there. I'm not sure if Dan and Miranda have other thoughts.
One other thing I might add, Commissioner Skol, is, and I don't know if this is the answer, but there were some restrictions at the state level around the amount that rents could increase. And we did see, I don't know if this is exactly the same timing, but we did see that once those were released, rents went up substantially and that happened definitely region-wide and I believe statewide in terms of that had been capped and frozen and then once that cap was gone, rents jumped pretty high. I would also say that it's been a number of years since we've actually seen construction of multifamily residential, which is often, more often, a rental-based unit than our single-family product. And so I think some of that's contributing in the sense that like the supply is not growing as much in the city. We've also seen a couple major apartment projects be purchased and oftentimes when that acquisition occurs, we've also seen improvements to those units and to the facilities and that often causes the rents to be escalated in those buildings. So I think there's a combination of factors happening and what I'm hoping is that we have entitled a few multifamily residential products, projects, excuse me, over the past few years and financing has been tight, the market has been tight, and so that is contributing to those not breaking ground, but what my hope is, is that hopefully, this is a big hope right now, but is that that can get unlocked and that we can see those start to be produced because we do have hundreds of units that have been entitled and that that extra supply will help to loosen some of the pressure that we're seeing on price points. But I think it's a combination of factors.
Okay, just a point of clarification there then to, in the rental statistics, I know that that's primarily apartments and everything, but do we, I think I might have heard it in your explanation there, do we, do you include a single-family residential rental in that, in those stats?
Yeah, it's a great question. I believe the main data that we use is focused on multifamily housing. We get it from Eco Northwest who pulls it from this CoStar database and I think that database mostly tracks multifamily, but it would be interesting to look into the single-family rental space.
Yeah, you know, living in the Villable area, I see more and more homes becoming rentals on a monthly basis and everything and I just wondered if that was, if that information was included in the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skol, we'd be happy to check with Eco Northwest and then we'll report back to the Planning Commission in terms of what that data source actually tracks and whether it includes both.
Yeah, the only thing I have to add is just looking at this report, I think about all the Housing Our Future work that's going to be done, the actions that are happening and so I know this is a report, but it also would be good to see like at the end or something and be like, and here's how we're helping kind of like move the needle on some of these things or just tie it into the work that you're doing because you're doing a lot of really good, we're doing a lot of really good work, you know? So just to be able to tie it in to the work plan and all of that stuff would be great. But other than that, it's a great report. I love the visualization, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, that is it for informational items unless the commissioners have anything for anything else. I am gonna be out for our next July meeting, so Commissioner Willard's gonna, yeah, she's got it. Got it covered. Okay, great. So with that, we've completed all the scheduled agenda items. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Yep, there we go. The meeting is adjourned at 6:45. Thanks.